Okay, we are ready to begin. And I'll do a tutorial with the mics right beforehand, too. This is Tuesday, March 28, 2023, at 6:00 p.m. This is a meeting of the City Council to interview candidates. This meeting will be conducted in person in the Sanford City Council chambers and via remote video and teleconference pursuant to one MRS A Section 403B, 2D, and Section 6 of the Sanford City Council Rules and Procedures as amended and adopted May 3, 2022. Members of the public may join.
I realize it must be disturbing.
Okay, Maura is doing stuff while I'm trying to read. I'll keep going. And join the meeting via phone by dialing 1-929-205-6099 using meeting ID 899-8611-7618 and password 293935 or via computer at the link provided. This meeting is open to the public but is not a public hearing. The public in attendance will not be called upon for questions or comments. All work products will be developed by consensus and brought forward for any public warranting legislative action by the City Council at a business meeting so posted and assembled. Would you please all join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Again?
Again. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'm gonna do a roll call now. Deputy Mayor Hurley.
Present and very loud.
Counselor Stackpole.
Present.
Counsel Hanselman.
Present.
Counsel Martell.
Present.
Counsel Tranche Montaigne.
Present.
And I am Mayor Brink. Also present is City Manager Steve Buck and Executive Assistant Larissa.
Yes, Steve's not here.
Oh, Steve's not here?
No.
I guess he's not present. And Executive Assistant Larissa Ricketts. All right, this is gonna be a little different.
Stacy, did you get Stacy, the HR Director? I don't introduce the audience.
Well, she is the HR Director. It's important that she's here this evening, so I bet you guys should know.
Okay, this is gonna be a little different than what we've done in the past. So I'm gonna read a couple of different statements for you guys, so pay attention. First of all, your mics. When you're not in use, you turn it off. The little light goes off. Is that little long thing in front? So would you all test it and make sure your light does go on?
We got two planning boards.
Okay, you all set? All right. Each candidate has been asked to present an introduction statement for up to two minutes long. Following the opening statements by the candidates, each counselor will take a turn at reading one question that they have been assigned. Then each of the candidates will get one minute to answer each of the questions. During this interview process, we will be reading from a list of standardized questions that will be used for all council candidates whom we have selected for the initial interviews. The interviews will be conducted in a manner to ensure that all candidates will participate in a fair and equitable process whereby a best candidate may be appointed by the City Council. Based upon your responses to each question asked, the interviewers will reserve the right to pose alternative questions, not a part of the standard list, according to you the chance to further, affording you the chance to further elaborate upon the enhance or enhance your initial response. Due to the time required to conduct this process, you are asked to be direct with your responses to ensure that all candidates have a full opportunity to respond. Before we continue, do you have any questions about the interview process? No. Okay. Are there any further considerations that we might need to make to accommodate you at this time? No. Okay. Do I have to have them verbally say the answers or just shaking their heads, okay? Okay. All right, so I'm going back to the questions, and if you guys could say yes or no. Okay, before we begin, do you have any questions?
No.
Okay. Are there any further considerations that we might need to make to accommodate you at this time? Don't forget to turn your mics on.
No.
No.
All right. You should have been provided with the city's council's goals as well as a description of the council committees as reference materials. So have you been provided that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any other questions before we start the interviews?
No.
No, thank you.
And for the counselors, you've got a scoring sheet. The first thing is going to be their presentation. So they'll each do a two-minute presentation. And the first one is, why have you applied to? They're gonna have to include these in their statements. Why have you applied to serve on the City Council at this time? And if appointed as a city counselor, what unique attributes would you bring to the Sanford of City, the City of Sanford that makes you the best candidate? So those are the challenges in your two-minute presentation. And what we're gonna do is we'll start and I'll go, you'll introduce your name and everything. I'm not gonna introduce you, you're gonna introduce yourself. So the first one will go there, and then I will be calling on you in different orders. So go ahead.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of City Council. Thank you for your consideration of having me be the seventh seat of the City Council. I ran last summer, and I continue to want to serve on this council because Sanford is my home, and I wanna do my part and give back to my community and hopefully serve this council proud. While I was not born in Sanford, I did spend a few years of my elementary school years in Sanford, up until 7th grade at Sanford Junior High School. And I always considered Sanford to be home. You know, there was always something for kids to do, families to do, and I'd moved around a lot, and I thought this was a great community. And unfortunately, I had to leave. My parents couldn't find work, but even throughout my, going across the country, I found Sanford to be my hometown. And I had the opportunity to move back here as an adult, and I'm glad to see some of those things are still here. And I hope to continue to give back and be able to help foster that even more and have other people call Sanford home. So I think I would bring a unique perspective. Partly is I did grow up, at least some of my formative years here in Sanford, and I'm also a licensed attorney. And I think that allows me to bring to the job a sense of critical thinking skills that I think are important, as well as representative skills. I represent people on a day-to-day basis in government, and I think that this perspective of having nostalgia along with these critical thinking skills, I think would be a great combination. That's why it makes me uniquely qualified to be the next City Counselor. I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Crystal?
Good evening. Thank you so much for having me here this evening. My name is Crystal Tenny. My current experience with serving in my second term on the city's planning board, and earlier this year unanimously voted in as Madam Vice Chair, combined with my significant background as PTA President for our local elementary school, many years volunteering on additional committees, has provided me with valuable insights into the needs and aspirations of our community, the challenges they face, and how we can help. These experiences only strengthen my desire to increase my community involvement and be a driving force behind the positive changes we deserve. Having already planned to run for City Council this year, I felt in my heart the timing was right and the opportunity, when this opportunity became available. I bring unique combination of attributes that makes me the best fit for cities of Sanford. My innovative and entrepreneurial mindset is one of my many powerful attributes, as it allows me to identify possibilities and opportunities while simultaneously bringing in a fresh set of eyes with enthusiasm for the hidden potential our city holds. As a highly motivated and detail-oriented professional, I will ensure strategies are followed through and put into action and execute ideas and goals effectively. I am deeply committed to closing the gap between the City Council and the community by increasing communications on a variety of platforms and serving as ambassador for our wonderful community, ensuring collaboration with full transparency and true accountability in local government, and hopes to stimulate and encourage the public to become more involved. I lead with compassion, empathy, authenticity, and integrity. I am steadfast with my desire to stimulate our city's economy by endorsing Sanford as a business-friendly community, attracting visitors and new businesses, and retaining current residents and businesses while supporting the current up-and-coming citywide projects. To achieve these goals, I am devoted to working closely with the community and collaborating with the Growth Council, Friends of Downtown, Land Bank staff, municipal staff members, and other organizations, and members of our community to create a shared vision for our downtown, keeping with the city council's goals and improve housing options, support local businesses, improve public infrastructures, and improve the overall quality of life for the community in a safe and effective manner. I am appreciative for this opportunity and am prepared and ready to serve our community as City Council member and to make a meaningful impact for Sanford's future. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Oliver?
Oh, thank you. She just said that, too, didn't she? Greetings, Mayor, City Council, and fellow neighbors. My name is Oliver Jones, and I am interviewing to become the next City Councilperson. I have applied to serve on the council because I have a passion to see our city grow into the all-American city that deserves to be. Having this opportunity to meet with citizens and business owners throughout our great city during my run for City Council and be engaged in being out and about, I listen to the wishes and concerns from our community that enable me to brainstorm ideas I hope to implement and make to make our city more attractive to businesses and others looking to call Sanford home, or people just want to come through for a day trip. Since moving to Sanford, I have been elected to committee boards and volunteered on other boards and service organizations to help Sanford promote a business-friendly and family-friendly atmosphere. Also have the unique opportunity to travel around the country and the world, has afforded me to witness the workings of other towns and cities that are similar to Sanford and how they have approached issues. In addition to this, I envision us capitalizing on our greatest resources, our people and our educational services, to promote a positive growing climate that would be conducive to create a business-friendly and family-friendly atmosphere. Furthermore, I'd like to engage with people throughout the Seacoast and Down East and ask them how they feel about Sanford and what would they like to, what would they make, what would they like to see here to make them more visit? Little things like this give us feedback to how to improve and attract customers and businesses. This along with engaging and listening to our current residents can help us formulate a plan to grow Sanford into the heart of York County. So thank you for allowing me to be here, and I look forward to your selection.
Thank you. Anne, you're gonna ask the questions, and we're gonna begin with Crystal.
Okay. Hi, I'm Anne Hanselman. Crystal, if you could tell us, if you were forced as part of the budget process, and this is a very timely question, if you were forced as part of the budget process to reduce the budgeted CIP by a significant amount for one of these three areas, roads, parks, master, sorry, the parks master plan or fire department equipment, which area would you choose and why that area versus the other two items? Feel free to include what information you might gather and how you might make your decision as part of your answer.
Wow. That's quite a question. It's a very important question. I agree. I guess the first, well, that's a significant decrease. My opinion would be the parks and trails, mostly because they're already established. We can build upon them. However, first order of most importance would be the fire stations. They are 50 to 100 years past their prime, so they are not up to code, so I think that's incredibly important. And our roads, they have come a long way. We've done a really great job with making them a priority with years in the past, but we still have a ways to go with our roads and our conditions, especially when it comes to possibly increasing parking, et cetera. But that would be my answer.
Thank you, Crystal.
Nathan will be the next.
Thank you very much for the question. While I would definitely have some consideration about seeing if there anything we could do to avoid having to cut spending in any sort of environment, if we had to decide to cut spending, I would probably agree with Crystal and go with the parks and masterworks, given that if this is something that needs to be a significant cut, we have to look to see what serves our city in its most bare essential needs. And so obviously, with the fire department, we have public safety concerns. You know, a destructive issue with the fire department is going to cause much more damage if we don't have the necessities and the facilities to make that working properly. And additionally, the roads, our citizens use the roads constantly. You know, main roads, side roads, in any event, that's also a major concern that our citizens have expressed to us, that expressed, you know, in forums, calls, hear about the roads all the time. And those are necessary for day-to-day travel. And so while it would be regrettable to have to cut a significant portion of spending in a program, if we can't come up with a solution, I would agree with the parks and masterworks.
Thank you. Oliver?
The mic. I'm going with the parks for everybody else. The other ones are priorities, roads and fire department, priorities of the city. Comes down to safety, really. With the parks, I feel that we have great citizens all around Sanford that will pitch in to help keep the parks clean, maintain them and stuff like that. So that's why I would go with cutting money from the park rather than the roads and the fire department.
Thank you. Bob, you have the next set of questions, and we're gonna begin with Nathan.
Okay. Thank you all for participating in this process. And I don't say that lightly. I think we've probably, all of us have been on the other side, sort of like where you are at one point. And I'd like to say the community is truly fortunate to have three quality people step forward here in this instance. So the community's gonna win, no matter what the decision is here this evening. And I'd also like to encourage all of you, if you're not successful here this evening, to continue your pursuit and involvement in city services, I'll just call them in general, and say, yes, even I have lost races before. And you lose, you pick yourself up, you come back, and you do it again. And so good luck to everybody there. So Nathan, my question to you is, economic development is vital for Sanford's continued growth and ability to support local services and public infrastructure. What do you feel are the roadblocks that businesses face in Sanford for new business development or the expansion of existing ones?
Thank you very much for the question, Counselor Stackpole. I think one of the biggest areas of causing, I guess, maybe some stagnation in business is unfortunately just our location. It's nothing, something that we can really fix, unfortunately. It's that we're not a coastal city, we're not off of the highway. And so what I would suggest would be, a roadblock would probably be the best opportunity for us to go forward in figuring out ways of, despite those issues, how do we draw people into our city? And I think some of the answers to that would be incentives for businesses to come to our city that maybe other cities can't, won't provide. You know, it's something that's a consideration we have to make, given our location. And doing that, I think, is going to, at least that, among other things, I think, would help us develop ways around this roadblock of, why aren't businesses and people coming to Sanford? It's, part of it is something that's out of our control, so how can we rise above that? So I think that would be my initial answer to what's our roadblock in business development.
Thanks, Nathan. I have just a quick follow-up for you.
Sure.
Which I will give, speak to each other candidate with. As a member of the City Council, how would you see the City Council fostering business growth within our jobs in the city? You sort of answered that, but I don't know if you wanna elaborate that in any more detail.
Sure. So some of this is going to have to be, to see what do we offer businesses to come in at this stage of the game? Either for new businesses, or what do we offer? What are our, I guess, barriers to entry, for lack of a better phrase? So it's information that I don't necessarily have or have top of my head about those areas, so I can't get into too many specifics. But I think analyzing those areas about what could be a barrier to entry, whether to expand or to start a new business here, would be the best way to, would be to figure that out. And that might be involving, you know, asking, just straight up asking our business owners, getting involved with their community that way, to figure out what is that going to entail, especially those who are already here and maybe thinking to expand.
Who's next?
Oliver's next.
Oliver's next. Do you want me to repeat the question, Oliver? Would you like me to read it again?
Please.
Okay. So the question is, economic development is vital to Sanford's continued growth and ability to support local services and public infrastructure. What do you feel are the roadblocks that businesses face in Sanford for new business development or the expansion of existing ones? And I'll do the follow-up in a minute.
I think our roadblocks are the process into getting the businesses here. If we could take a look at the entire process from handling started business in Sanford to it coming here, and ask current business owners or business owners that came through and ask them, what do they like about the process, what they didn't like about the process? When you look at stuff like that, we need to look at advertisement, advertising Sanford. We have a great program here with the Adult Education Center. We're educating our population here, so we have a sustainable workforce. So we need to promote that. Also, we can look into other towns and cities that are similar to Sanford, like the city I graduated from was in Monarch, North Carolina. Its population is about 20,000 people. It's a booming city, and a lot of people come through there. Granted, it's on, you know, it's a three-way city, well, I'm sorry, a turnpike city, but we have business that goes through Sanford to go to turnpike to go to Rochester. We have all this money pass through Sanford. So just advertising here and trying to attract business with our resources, I think we can actually grow Sanford and bring businesses here.
And as a potential City Councilor, or if you were successful in running the City Council, how do you see the City Council fostering business growth? So it's more of a process question for the City Council.
Like I mentioned before, you could look into sister cities, see what they're doing. Look around the state, see what they're doing there, too. Just trying to change the process, but look what's successful in other places.
Great. Crystal, would you like me to reread the question for you? I don't mind.
If you wouldn't mind, that would be great. Thank you.
Economic development is vital for Sanford's continued growth and ability to support local services and public infrastructure. What do you feel are the roadblocks that businesses face in Sanford for new business development or the expansion of existing ones?
I agree with both of the candidates up here. Location is one of the biggest roadblocks, but we are very fortunate that we might not be a destination city, but we have a lot of businesses that do pass through, especially in the summertime. We have folks who vacation. And by marketing our business, our town, and allowing incentives, et cetera, they would be able to know that having a business here is even a possibility. What can Sanford offer for their business? And kind of get into those details, but also review of our application process. You know, what does that look like, literally, from point A all the way to the time a business is established, but it doesn't stop there? You know, because then we have to look at the other side of business retention and how do we, getting business in is fantastic, but then we want to keep them here, but also offering a diverse of businesses that will also drive the public to want to come to Sanford. And then we can be able to stimulate our own economy here in Sanford.
And the follow-up is, as a potential future member of the City Council, how do you see the City Council fostering business growth and jobs in our city?
I think going back to the process would be incredibly beneficial. I actually tried to research when the last time the policy was actually updated, so if we can go back, look at where we could create efficiencies, possibly cut costs, and go through, but also I would even entertain surveying our current business owners and seeing what they think about the process, where they feel we can create efficiencies, where possibly costs could be hindering or sort of outside their scope, if, you know, what are those decisions that come into play when they say, I want to bring my business to Sanford? Or why don't I bring my business to Sanford? Or why should I bring my business to Sanford? These are questions that we should be able to answer in order to market Sanford as business-friendly.
Thank you.
Crystal, this is gonna start with you. Housing is, Oliver's next? Oliver's first? Okay. Let me get, wait one minute. Oliver will be first, Crystal two, a third? Okay. All right. Housing is necessary to support a workforce and other residential needs within our city. How do you envision the city fostering housing development? Oliver? And that was my fault, because I did say her at first, and then I corrected it.
As far as the housing, we can look into zoning. I mean, just having certain areas. I know we were looking at the, oh my God, I forgot the project already, the old Nassau Community College over there.
Stormont Forest?
Yes, Stormont Forest, yes. We could look into trying to attract more people here to build, you know, apartment complexes, but also, like, you know, we want to have more residential homes here, too. If we can possibly, like I said, once we start bringing business in, the people will come, you know? So if we can try to promote Sanford as a family-friendly place, we can actually attract people to come to Sanford, wants to build homes here, and clean up lots, I mean, like the vacant lots over there that were the old Nassau Stormont Forests. If they were cleaned up, if they were maintained earlier, somebody came by, you know, bought property to look into putting housing there. So as long as we can try to make the land attractive and be more flexible with the zoning for residential and most unit houses, I think that will improve the house situation here.
Crystal?
Thank you. Partnering with the land bank staff, I think, would be tremendous. Revitalizing any current buildings that we currently have going back to the Nassau, I was thrilled for that project. I think it's exactly what Sanford needs, especially to bring in new residents, if we're gonna stimulate our economy as well. And looking at zoning as well. I think zoning would be a great place to start as well.
And Nathan?
Would you mind repeating the question, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Housing is necessary to support a workforce and other residential needs within our city. How do you envision the city fostering housing development?
Sure. So what I would say is, one of the first things we need to look at is, how much, what's the demand for housing in Sanford? I think working with the land bank and other housing authorities could help us determine what kind of demand there is for housing. And is it a demand for purchasing homes, or is it a demand for rent? We have to look at, what's the average person who's coming to live in Sanford, what can they afford? And those could be done through studies. I know that there was a study done pretty recently through the Communications Coordinator about some of the demographics and some of the questions that we had for Sanford, and I think that'd be a great way to analyze what demand is there for housing and what kind of housing. Because what we don't want to do is develop, let's say, more single-family homes by rezoning, if that's not what the demand is for. If we want to bring in sustainable housing for a workforce where the people that are coming to live in Sanford are more looking for apartment complexes or to rent, then that might be a different way we look at zoning, and we look at other ways to ensure that not only are we providing housing for people who want to come and be a workforce in Sanford, but that's but that's the appropriate housing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jonathan? And the order, it'd be Oliver, Crystal, and Nathan.
Thank you. So the city is, so this is for Oliver. The city is responsible for infrastructure such as roads and buildings, emergency services such as police, fire, and ambulances, also trash and recycling, plus community planning and development. What is your philosophy for striking a balance between city needs and wants in relation to the taxpayer burden? And what would be your priority?
That is a tough one. I mean, they're all equally important. I mean, it'll be tough to prioritize one over the other. I mean, the easiest thing would to say, like, you know, trash removal, but even that's a hot topic, you know? With the trash back and stuff and, uh... So he repeated the question one more time, I'm sorry. It was, it was a long one.
So the city is responsible for infrastructure such as roads and buildings, emergency services such as police, fire, and ambulances, also trash and recycling, plus community planning and development. What is your philosophy for striking a balance between city needs and wants in relation to the taxpayer burden? And what is your priority?
They're all equally important. I mean, we want, we, we're trying to go to studies, so, I mean, we're in development. The services, we definitely, you know, fire department, police, everything like that. And infrastructure, that's, that's important too. I mean, if we can find a way just to balance them, I mean, to like, you know, just take priority over what needs to be addressed right now. Like, take assessment of everything we have, like if we need to fix a bridge or the development of like, you know, the workforce. We just have to take assessment and then go from there. I mean, I know it's a broad answer, but that's the only way we can really approach any problem is just taking an internal look and analyzing everything.
Nathan?
Sorry.
Would you like me to repeat the question again, or?
If you wouldn't mind. Thank you.
Sure. The city is responsible for infrastructure such as roads and buildings, emergency services such as police, fire, and ambulances, also trash and recycling, plus community planning and development. What is your philosophy for striking a balance between city needs and wants in relation to the taxpayer burden? And what would be your priority?
Sure. So what I would say is, city council does have a lot of responsibility to make sure this city runs effectively for our citizens. But at the end of the day, we are on this council to represent the citizens. And I think the first priority has to be what our decisions are going to have an impact on them. Because if we decide to raise tax burdens on our citizens without any sort of other plan, they're just going to leave. But I do think that, you know, a priority needs to be leaning more towards our citizens. But what I will say is, if we can, as it's in the city goal, city council goals, to diversify and expand the tax base, then that's something we don't need to worry about as much. You know, in the short term, we may have to deal with that situation. But I think in the long term, if we focus our goal on finding businesses and people to come to our city, which I think is, probably needs to be one of the higher priorities, that solves some of the problems of having to make those kind of decisions on cutting spending in ways that we may not want to cut spending. And also, we can focus on those city, on those wants that we want for our city to help us progress and continue to thrive. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Crystal, do you want me to, would you like me to repeat that as well?
Yes, please. Thank you.
I know, I guess.
There's a, it's very, it's very involved. It's a very good question.
So the city is responsible for infrastructure such as roads and buildings, emergency services such as police, fire, and ambulances, also trash and recycling, plus community planning and development. What is your philosophy for striking a balance between city needs and city wants in relation to the taxpayer burden? And what would be your priority?
I can't imagine serving on the city council is, is easy when it comes to balancing. But we are representative of, of the community, of, of the people. I would look at the budget. I would, obviously, you want to take care of, of the needs before you get to the wants. But I would also look at getting creative with increasing our, our tax base. Also, getting creative with looking at additional, like, non-property revenue options that we may have in order to fund those wants. There are services we have that, that the community needs more than what they would want. But I think that we could work together and collaborate collectively as a community to still achieve both needs and wants while keeping residents here and retaining our residents and still making everybody happy. I think there's, there's, there's got to be a way. Thank you.
Maura? It's my turn. Actually noted down who was first for our mayor, so I could ask that. So Crystal, you're going to be first on this question, so you can pay more attention to the first reading. The city just received $25 million federal infrastructure grant, which is called the Raze Grant. The majority of the grant will be used within the downtown for improvements. It also includes number one pond, in case you're unfamiliar, a little unfamiliar, and the Cottage Street corridor. The revitalization of Sanford's downtown is a high priority of the city council. What other initiative could the city council put forward towards the Sanford downtown revitalization? Knowing that we have the funds for some, a big infrastructure improvement, what other initiatives could you see the city council working on for the downtown? So Crystal, that would go for you.
We should look at parking as, I know that's, that's huge. And I know there has been some conversations about creating a park and ride, which I think would be incredibly beneficial for our community. But also looking at lighting for businesses. If we want to attract businesses, we also need to be attractive. So if we can increase lighting for the downtown area, I actually had an idea to, with creating what this vision would look like for our downtown area, even creating a sort of contest within our community to stimulate involvement from those around us, so they can tell us what they think too, what, what's important to them. And really get the input from the community, not just from, you know, what we think. I mean, obviously, that's a lot of money, but it can go pretty fast. So if we look at parking, if we look at lighting, you know, those safety items, but we also look at the way that the buildings are and how we can make them more attractive. It's funny, I had a note about this and my mind has gone blank. So I do apologize, because I was really excited for this question. I was like, I have, I have a whole plan for it.
I asked for this question, because I'm a downtown girl, so.
Yes. I think when it also, because we also want to take into consideration our comp plan as well. And that was, I, I loved reading that. It hasn't been updated since, boy, like 2005 or something like that. But I think it's worth having a committee. If you look at the Growth Council and partner with them, they have amazing ideas, especially with them Friends of Downtown. They, they would be the, the go-to ones for that. And partnering with them to even create this community-wide contest as a way to stimulate involvement from the community. But there are a lot of ways we can improve. And I know parking is, is a big one for this city, especially when it comes to even like electronic vehicles, curbs, streets, et cetera. Would go a long way with creating that attractiveness for the downtown area.
Nate, would you like me to reread the question? Or can you, like, extrapolate about downtown?
I think, I think I can take this one from here, but thank you. So to revitalize downtown, it's an interesting balance, I think. Because on one hand, we do want to make sure that we have adequate parking, we have adequate safety features. I agree with those, those points. But the downtown's also an area that has a lot of history. And I think if we go too far into revitalizing, we, we go into remodeling. And that takes away some of the history that Sanford has, some of that nostalgia. I mean, we see those, these pictures of Sanford being around for, for decades and, you know, eighteen hundreds and all these other great historical components. So I think in a way to capture that history while also still coming up with a way to maybe modernize. You know, one thing I can think of is downtown has, has the mills. And I know that we are working on, you know, it has some history to it, and that's great. But, you know, unfortunately, we're not in the textile business anymore. But we do, there are ways to revitalize, let's say, those mills or encourage others who, maybe the city doesn't own those, that property. You know, we look at these, these, one of my favorite types of apartments I've seen are those mill properties that shift over into becoming these great apartments. But they still retain a lot of that history. And I think that's a great strategy to focus on. A bunch of different projects would be figuring out a way to revitalize and modernize and make things attractive and safe while also making sure we don't interrupt Sanford's history.
Oliver, would you like me to reread the question? I don't mind.
No, thank you.
Okay.
First thing I would do is, they mentioned lighting and stuff like that, which was one of my answers. The lighting of like, you know, having people feel safer down, in downtown. That's one thing that a lot of people brought up to me when I was going around town and asked people what they dislike and like about Sanford. They didn't feel safe, so they would feel more lighting down there, downtown would definitely help out. And modernizing downtown a little bit. Like Nate said, I mean, you want to keep that, that small-town feel, but we need to go into 21st century and start modernizing Sanford a little bit. And with that, I would like to, I think the last city council meeting was talking about the art, art commission or art council. Get them involved. Get them involved and have them like, you know, trying to modernize Sanford with art. Another thing that I was trying to do, well, one of the things I brought up during my city council run was getting the high school involved. We have botany classes, we have welding classes. I would like to see the senior class make a wellness sculpture every single year and join the city of Sanford. We put them in, put them in parks, we can put them on trails and stuff like that. And we can advertise it as come walk the art trails of Sanford, or come see the art park of Sanford. Little things like that that will get the community involved, get the school involved. It will, it will actually promote our, our school system here and put us on the map of what, what our school system is doing for our city. This stuff, I mean, it's going to cost a bit of money, yes, but it's mainly coming, it's, we're giving the kids training, we're giving them a sense of purpose. We're getting something to look back at and say, hey, you know, 20 years ago, I, I did that, you know? And every senior class would donate. And we'll just put it around town. It's, I mean, it's not going to cost that much since they're already doing welding, welding already. It's just, you know, they're getting trained with it. Also, just get the community involved. See what they want, see what they want here in Sanford. That's the main thing. We want to keep people here. We want to bring businesses here. So if they see people enjoying Sanford, and they'll start spreading the word, people start coming to Sanford.
Peter?
Thank you all three for coming here. I know you're on the firing line, and I appreciate you doing this. So let's get right to it. If there was one initiative or change that you could accomplish between now and December 31st, which would be your appointment time, as a new city councilor, what would it be? And this is a big question, because when I was running, I was running to make everybody get along, get the infighting done. And that was huge for me. And, and we have a great staff. Council's getting along great. And that was dear to, dear to me. So it's going to Oliver first, I believe? Is it going to Oliver, Madam Mayor?
We're trying to figure that out now. It's Nate.
You're up, Nate.
Thank you very much. So, given that this would be a shorter period of time, there's not so many grandiose goals that I could achieve in a short period of time. But I think what we could do during, between now and December was something that I mentioned in a previous answer, is developing a study in terms of where our citizens are economically. Being able to see what their cost of living is, being able to see what kind of housing they have, what kind of housing maybe they aspire to have. And I think that kind of work will help us set some groundwork for some bigger projects, whether I'm here or not, that will at least give us some information that we can use to move forward. And so I think if I only had a few months, I know it takes a while to get those studies going, but I think that setting up those questions, those parameters, that would be an initiative that I would like to accomplish if I only had a few months.
Thank you. Is it Crystal next?
Oliver.
Oliver.
Oliver, you're up, buddy. Do you want me to read this to you again? Okay, so if there's one initiative or change that you could accomplish between now and December 31st, again, that's when your time is up, if we appoint you. As a new city councilor, what would it be?
I would like to look at the process to bring businesses here. What is, what does, what do, what hoops do they have to jump through to get a business here in Sanford? That's the main thing. That's the thing that everybody has on their mind. That's what everybody wants. They want to bring businesses to Sanford. So we need to look at the process, go into, okay, what do we need to do? How can we make it easier? How, how can we make it easier and beneficial for Sanford? So that would be my, my one thing I would try to do before 31st of December.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Crystal, would you like me to read that again?
Yes, please.
You got it. All right, so if there is one initiative or change that you could accomplish between now and December 31st as a new city councilor, what would it be?
I'm very motivated, so to stick to one, I feel like we can do them all. So I'm like, why not? Just check it off the list. Which actually would be one of the big things that we should look at is our processes. We should look at what the top will even say five, you know? If we can do more than five, excellent. But, you know, now it's the end of the year. That's actually a long time. And if, when you have teams that work effectively and they can collaborate together, you can revisit what those processes are, including looking at our process to bring businesses to Sanford, like, let's start with, with that process. How do we make Sanford business-friendly if that is one of our goals? Let's go to that process. Let's, let's look at it, let's review it. Let's put the time and effort with the community to see what that process should look like, even if we compare it to other towns and what their, their process is as well. But how do we make Sanford look business-friendly, not just on paper, but also with marketing efforts, et cetera? So one of the biggest things would be to look at, you know, our processes, how we can create efficiencies, create quicker turnaround times, and save money. I mean, we could even look at the, the budget review process as well, can be number two if you want. And how we're able to communicate those processes to the community would be part of that as well. Because I'm huge with communication and collaboration across all boards. You know, the entire community, and how we can stimulate involvement from everybody. That was more than one. I apologize. But they all tie in together.
No, that was awesome answer. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate all three of you. Thank you.
Okay, we have a few more questions for you, not hard. And I'm, we're just gonna, there's no order to this. I just need answers to these. So I'll call, I'll just break down the line. Once a month on Tuesdays and Wednesdays, there are subcommittee meetings during the day. And on Tuesday nights, we have regular city council meetings that may start as early as 3:00 PM and as late as 10:00 PM. Are you available to attend all of these meetings? Nathan?
So I will say that I will make them a priority. I will say that, you know, being an attorney, sometimes the courts do not give me certain flexibility. But with the approach of Zoom hearings and things like that, I think it's something that I could be flexible in, in doing. So that... So that's my answer.
Crystal?
I have flexibility on Tuesdays. As you know, I currently serve on the city's planning board, and they meet Wednesdays, the first and the third Wednesday of every month. I'm not sure if that would cause any conflict or...
Can't be on both.
Can't be on both, that's what Jamie Cole just said to me. Okay, so, to that effect, I would have to make a decision. And it would be a very easy decision for me to make, so there would be no conflict. Thank you.
Thank you. Oliver?
I'm not sure what to say to see my employees watching tonight, so. I would, no, I would have no problem making meetings. If I have to take a little bit of time off for important ones, I mean, I obviously can't make every single one, if it's like nine o'clock in the morning, you know? But certain ones I can make, definitely if they're either Zoom or something like that, I can definitely make it. But I would make time to be here, especially the City Council meetings, of course, but it's ones during the day that I would have to pick and choose which ones I would have attend.
Okay, thank you.
So, can I make a comment? So, the committee, the subcommittee meetings are by Zoom, so that will make it, should make it a little bit easier, if you can just carve out the hour or so that they usually take, just to stay aware.
Do any of the applicants have any questions of us?
No questions, too strange.
I guess I can ask a question. And it can be everyone here on the council, or if there's a couple answers that people hear and they go, yep, that's the one. What do you find to be the greatest challenge that you face here on the City Council, given all the responsibilities you have in all these organizations, but also dealing with the public and making sure that you're accountable? What do you, what do you find to be the most difficult part of this job? And how do you proceed from that?
Would anyone like to answer that? We'll start with Pete, I think we'll go right down the line.
All right. So I'm the, I'm the new guy in the council this year. I find that balancing your voter base, because they really believe in you. You have to balance that, plus you have to go through the budget, you got to go look at the fire, police, there's a lot that you have to do tactfully. And that's what I find the most difficult is, you have to. But, but my recommendation would be to stick to your voter base, stick to your true meaning, and everything usually works out well if you do that.
Bob?
Yeah, I'm going to steal a little bit of what Pete said, which I try not to do, but he stole my answer, actually, but it was in my head before you said it. It's balance, you know, it's balance, everything. And that includes time, you know, you, you, people talk about being in the City Council, you can spend as much time as you want in it, or not, or less time maybe than you should, you know, it runs, it runs that gamut. So it's, it's in balance, in balancing your personal time. But it's also balancing, as you've all said, the needs of the taxpayers versus the, the needs of the services that basically they demand. Because if you go and say to them, we're going to reduce policemen, or we're going to reduce the firemen, or we're going to raise the price of orange trash bags, or whatever, you know, it's, they're going to push back on you, and rightly so, because you are their representative. So, you know, it's a process, but it's a process of trying to balance all the needs, the needs of the municipality, the needs of the taxpayers. And you see us going through that right now with this, with this, with this budget. But you get there, you work through the process, you listen, you know, you do what you think is right, what your gut tells you is right, or what your intellect tells you is right. Don't play games, and, and things tend to work themselves out.
Thank you. Jonathan, do you have anything?
Sure, I'll mirror some of those comments. So, yeah, I guess a balance of, well, time, for one thing. The budget's always tough when you're looking at, you know, it's easier to say, well, maybe we'll put off buying a new truck or whatever, versus somebody potentially losing their job. You know, I think, looking at that, those sort of decisions is always tough. You know, but we try to make the cuts where we can, and hopefully not impact anyone as much as possible. But yeah, just, you know, make sure you're in tune with your voter base and, and, you know, what people are looking for. And, you know, you'll see a lot of chatter on Facebook, too. Some of it's founded, some may not be. Sometimes there's some misinformation. So it, a great resource is Steve, if you have questions about things. So definitely, you know, communication and just trying to make sure you're maintaining some balance.
Thank you. Anne?
Could you repeat the question?
Absolutely.
I will say that government does work much too solely for me, as somebody who's been involved in a lot of grassroots efforts and volunteerism, so that's been a learning curve. I don't like politics. And unfortunately, as our council, it works very hard not to be partisan by any means within our council. I've discovered that politics within our community, within our, you know, operations does exist, and that's a frustrating aspect of the work we do. Or for me, I should say, work I do. And I guess I would say that I don't worry about the voter base, but I might be defining this wrong, because we have very low voter turnout, but I worry about our community greatly. And I really look to get feedback from as diverse members of our community, which is sometimes hard to do, reaching that diverse, you know, aspects of our community can be challenging, too. Thank you.
Maura?
Steve, we can all answer this one. So she is, she's a bleeding heart, she really does think of everybody, and she tries to make sure she, from soup to nuts, no, I think it's a good, I think it's a good thing, no, I think it's a good thing, because sometimes, I think she reaches and hears that better than some of the rest of us hear that. So she's a really good voice on the, on the City Council for that. I've got, I've been doing this the longest, I believe, on the City Council at least. And the hardest thing for me, as a business owner, and Anne might be actually able to share some of this, is you think of a voter, you think, and you hear things from other businesses, and you bring forward issues. And the hardest thing for me, and it has, it gets personal sometimes, is the perception that you are doing something so, for yourself, and to have it used against you, even though the issue is not yours, but it is so common in the business community, an issue, or from the taxpayers, a very common issue, that you feel the need, you've got to speak up, even though you know it's going to be hard on you to do so, because you have to speak for those people. So I find that the hardest, because it has been personal sometimes, and it can hurt. So, thank you.
And of course, we're in the budgeting process, so that's always very difficult. Each department thinks their department is the most important department. They also think the other department is working as hard as they are, which is pretty difficult. Every department has so much misinformation, it is unbelievable, including some of the comments we heard here today, from even citizens coming forward wanting to speak. I'm just amazed at how much misinformation is out there that you then have to try to correct without hurting people's feelings and stuff. But I think the most disappointing part is department on department. I think we have to be careful about that, because we are a team. All departments are departments of Sanford, and they have to remember who they're really working for. Getting people to realize who live out of the city of Sanford, when you have a contract coming up and you want more and more money and stuff, to understand the reason you live outside of Sanford is because the taxes are too high here, and the housing is too high, and that's lots of times why people live outside of Sanford. And I don't know any gentle way to tell people that when they're fighting for something that they think is important, maybe you need to live here in Sanford and determine what's important. So that would probably be my pet peeve. Yes, all right. So, seeing as I was the last person, does each applicant feel they have been, and I'm going to need a verbal answer to this, does each applicant feel they have been treated fairly throughout the process? Nathan?
Yes.
Crystal?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Thank you very much. The City Council will have a public discussion at its next regular meeting on April 4th. We will vote at that time. I will not, because the person is replacing me. So I can do all the other stuff, I just can't vote. Let's see, on April 4th, and will vote at that time on whether to appoint one of you to the vacant City Council position for the remainder of the year. If we can't agree, then we probably won't be...
Four of us need to agree.
Four of you need to agree, which could be tough. Tough, you guys are tough. I would like to thank you guys for coming and just spending the time with us. It was quite the educational process for us, hearing from you. Also, getting to know the three of you better, I know two of you are on the planning board, which, thank you very much. And I know you've run for several things, so please, only one of you can make it to this point, please still be a part of the political process. It's so very important to have, and you're all highly intelligent, your answers were all great, so we really appreciate, you know, what you have done, and you're willing to still do. So thank you very much. So, for everybody, for you guys to know what the next process is, you guys need to put your name on these, I'm going to be collecting them and tallying, the reason I only want your first name on it, so I can pass it back to you next week, I will tally the votes and give you the score sheet. So make sure you put points in there for the different things, or it will be a zero, we don't want any zeros on there. And then I will collect those from you and tally them, and so next week you will have that. We, it's, unfortunately, it's going to be live, you know, so we'll have a discussion about you. You're more than welcome to attend, if you feel comfortable doing that. We will understand if you don't feel comfortable doing that. So whatever you feel, you know, please, but we will be, we're going to be talking about you.
The worst part is the public process that we have to do, because you're public members, so no behind closed doors.
Yeah.
Thank you, everyone, for taking the time. This was a really cool process, you guys did an excellent job. And before we walked in, I said to these guys, I'm like, I feel bad for them, because we're awesome. And I said that, you know, there is no wrong decision, you know, there's no wrong choice.
We were quite pleased that we had good applicants, so thank you for applying. We were delighted.
Yeah, this was great, thank you for the time. I know it's been a long day for you guys, so.